We'll call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. I will read out the closed session topics for tonight. Recommended expulsion, public employee assignment, reassignment, appointment, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints, conference with labor negotiator, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, and anticipated litigation. Is there any comment, any public comment on closed session topics? There is no public comment, we will adjourn to closed session. I will now convene our regular meeting. Student Board Representative Maria Velazquez will be joining us via Zoom. We have a couple of reminders for tonight's meeting. For the California Department of Health Guidelines, face masks will be worn indoors regardless of vaccination status. We ask that all meeting attendees keep their face mask on while inside this building. And any member of the public who wants to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, who did not RSVP in advance may fill out the public comment form. It's a green form located on the table in the back of the room. Please hand your form to Administrative Assistant Dalia Smart before the item comes up for the agenda. Please fill out a separate form for each item you'd like to comment on. Delia is right in the back at that table. All right, I will introduce an interpreter. Linguistica, interpreting and translation will be interpreting the meeting tonight into Spanish. This meeting via Zoom online platform. There's an option to select the Spanish audio at the bottom of the Zoom window. Linguistica, interpreting and translation. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The meeting or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. The Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be led by Board Member Gaby. There was no action taken in closed session. The revisions to the agenda for annual enclosure items are enclosures number three, 12, 13, 14, and 32. Our first item on the agenda will be focus on student learning. And that will be an update on 21, 22 school year enclosure number one. The presenters are interim superintendent Doug Cardoza, who will be joined by Karina Mello, work-based learning coordinator, Carrie Newland, Academy Lead Teacher for the Academy of Business and Finance at Golden West High School, and Valerie Seita, District Library Media Manager.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, Board Members and the community. Tonight, Doug Cardoza's interim superintendent. I'm here to do an update on the school year. I first of all want to introduce a person here. Her name is Krista Carrasco. Krista's been a, come on up Krista. Krista's been a longtime teacher in our district and she has been one of the strongest teachers in our district for many years. When I was a young principal, Krista Carrascos and several other of our veteran teachers were those teachers that we went and watched to learn how to teach and learn how to teach kids to read. So she's been a highly skilled valuable tool teacher in our district for many years. And Krista wanted to come and have a quick conversation about an experience she had with our HR team through these times and just tell her story. So she's nervous about being here. She's very good at talking to little kids, so we're trying to break the ice and let her tell her story here tonight. So Krista Carrasco.
First of all, thank you so much for allowing me this time. I know you're incredibly busy, so thank you, Board President, trustees, and friends. My name's Krista Carrasco. And, um, excuse me. I have been fortunate to serve the kids in Visalia Unified for many years. And the beginning of this year, you know, your heart gets all excited because it's a brand new year and you have all these great expectations. And this one was a little different because on the first day of school, I was diagnosed with cancer. And it was, it's been amazing, all the blessings that have come my way through many people. And it took me a little bit of time to think, okay, what do I do? And someone said, talk to Greg Price, he'll get you going. And Greg sat me down and had me speak with Kristen Corliss and Jennifer Ferguson. And at a time when we have so many opportunities to be concerned about things the way we wish they could have been, I was just abundantly blessed about how things could be. I was treated with such high regard, they were compassionate, they were present. They thought about what was best for me when I didn't want to think about what's best for me. I needed little kids in front of me and they reminded me that I needed to be healed first so I can go back and serve my students. I would be remiss if I didn't mention my incredible team with Claudia Ardone and my reading intervention team and my friends from Royal Oaks and Little Glen and throughout the district. I was given an amazing amount of support. But sitting with Kristen and Jennifer, you folks, you know, they were extraordinarily wonderful to me. And I'm sure I'm not the only one. So at a time where we have so many concerns and so many things we wish they were to be different, we need to celebrate the wonderful people we have that are doing great jobs. Because friends, I'm back reading with first and second graders. I am sitting in a classroom. I wake up and I think, oh my gosh, you know, today I read with a kidney and pork chop. I mean, that was awesome. But I just want to take this time to celebrate them and the treatment that I received. They were exemplary, so please take note of them. You have extraordinary people working for you. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
All right, I'm gonna call up Karina.
Good evening, Board Members, President Guerrero.
I apologize. I forgot I had a slide in here and just a quick spotlight, Karina. Karina's used to that. We were, anyway, quick spotlight on Golden West FFA. Just want to throw that out there again, trying to keep in front of us our purpose here and the great things that are happening and engagement kids have. So we had kids involved in speaking contests. Sophia Benitez won first place in the prepared public speaking. Gavin Grupetti placed first in impromptu. That means they are given a topic, they got like 30 seconds to come up with a speech. Ricardo Vera placed second in impromptu. And so we're just really incredibly proud of all of those teams there. So anyway, thank you for that. Now.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, members of the board, and interim superintendent Cardoza. I'm Valerie Sida, District Library Media Manager, and I'm honored to be with you tonight to showcase library media services in this district spotlight. Last week on World Read Aloud Day, two elementary schools, Mountain View and Shannon Ranch, joined millions around the globe in this annual celebration of the power of Read Alouds and bringing people together and strengthening the bond of community. Site librarian Chantel Nguyen and Randy Overstreet set up multiple virtual author visits to kick off the celebrations on their campuses. Through these visits, students had the opportunity to connect with children's authors who took them through their own personal journeys to authorship, discussed more about their craft and about their published works. Students were excited to meet with the authors and engage in a Q and A within these sessions. And we know that students walk away with just an overall heightened excitement around reading from these visits. So we look forward to many more of those visits to come. In my slides, you'll see Mountain View's dual immersion program. They had an awesome bilingual author that visited with them and that was their first first year participating in World Read Aloud Day, so that was awesome. And for Shannon Ranch, this is the third or fourth year for them. And they had a returning author, David A. Kelly, who he's an author of baseball mysteries, which is really popular with the kids. So great job to those schools.
Good evening, Board Members, President Guerrero. My name is Karina Mello and I am one of the work-based learning coordinators with the College and Career Readiness Department. I provide support to four of the district's eight academies, one of those being the Academy of Business and Finance, which is located at Golden West High School. With me tonight is Academy Lead Teacher Carrie Newland, who will be highlighting the academy's virtual enterprise program.
Good evening, Board Members, Cabinet, all stakeholders in attendance. Tonight I wanted to share about our exceptional virtual enterprise program at Golden West High School, commonly referred to as VE. Our VE students develop essential leadership, professional, functional, and core technology skills through VE's hands-on immersive work-based learning experiences. Over the course of an academic year, our VE teacher, Dr. Hutchison, becomes a consultant as students work individually in departments and as a firm to develop, refine, and implement a business plan. In order to manage their virtual business, students work in departments to manage day-to-day functions, produce key deliverables, assess growth, make decisions, respond to challenges, and participate in a variety of business-related events and activities in person and through VE's global marketplace. VE classrooms break the mold by connecting students around the world, transforming teachers into facilitators, and turning the classroom into a vibrant workplace. Thank you.
So I wanted to throw up another spotlight. You know, we hit the 100th day of school this year. So there's a tradition for those that have been involved at Elbow Creek where staff and students dress up as if they're 100 years old, I guess. And I actually have a daughter in there in that picture, so she's a first-year teacher, so it was fun to see that. So kudos to Elbow Creek and all the schools that did some fun things for that 100th day of school. And last but not least, something to celebrate this weekend, we have our winter formal. The weather's going to be great. It's going to be a great time. Mrs. Gaby has a lot of hair to put together for that. And so we're looking forward to that and it should be a fun night. So with that, any questions?
We do have one public comment, Rachel Lewis.
Good evening. I am Rachel Lewis, Area Seven resident and mother of a kindergartner. Omicron cases are now 100.0% of all coronavirus cases in California. The California seven-day case rate has decreased 70% in just three weeks. In the past month, the seven-day case rate in New York, New Jersey, and Maryland have decreased by more than 90%. In seven days, the California case rate will be 90% lower than it was a month before, and the state will discontinue guidance of promoting forced public indoor masking. We are forgetting something. Oh yeah, our children are being suffocated for six hours a day in California public schools. Educators are engaging in a practice that definitely qualifies as physical and emotional abuse of our children. Masks do not slow the spread of Omicron. Vaccines do not slow the spread of Omicron. For seven months, concerned parents have encouraged the school board to make masks optional in our schools. Last week, the teacher union shared publicly the message that has been circulating in private meetings in the union, the board, administrators, and the teachers. One of the board representations two weeks ago concerned parents learned parents are likely lucky that plastic barriers have been removed from board meetings. Live theater and indoor sports can occur without masks, but in-person learning cannot. People that believe masks don't work might be right and they might be wrong. If the masks that might not work become optional in schools, the district could lose funding if someone gets sick. Wait, what? Are students currently getting sick while wearing masks? Has a student anywhere sued a school because a student caught a cold while other students were not wearing masks? Have any California school districts lost funding for mask noncompliance? Join the Facebook group, Tulare County Parents for School Board. We are recruiting candidates in Visalia Trustee Area One, Two, and Three to run for school board. We are funding the campaigns for candidates in Area Four and Six. I personally will not fund any candidate that accepts any campaign contributions from the teacher unions or teacher association. Without a board that supports students and parents first, the teacher unions will continue to control the decisions of the board at BUSD. Board members are complaining that a few of the parents' public comments have hurt their feelings. Forced masks in our schools is hurting more than just the feelings of our children. Parental rude behavior at board meetings will not end until the state board sanctioned abuse of our children has been discontinued. Mama bears and Papa bears of Visalia will continue to protect our Cubs. Thank you.
Okay, regarding enclosure number one, any comments to Mr. Cardoza?
Not a comment to Mr. Cardoza, but I would be remiss if we had Mrs. Carrasco in our presence and I didn't say some sort of public, just thank you for, we have here like one of the greatest teachers that will ever be in our district. She has taught, I mean, I can't even count how many kids should not only read, but just love literacy. And some of our most at-risk kids, she mentors teachers just because it's the right thing to do. Those first few weeks, new teachers, I know that she goes in and sometimes as a new teacher, you just need a moment to pull yourself together and she will go in with a book and read to the class, so the teacher just has a moment, just out of the kindness of her heart. And so thank you, like she is just an awesome educator.
Any other board member comments? Okay, we're gonna move on to our next enclosure and that would be California College Guidance Initiative CCG report. And Joanna Kramer, Paige Leverin.
Hello, everyone. That's much better, right? Is our PowerPoint in the?
There it is, yay.
Okay, um, hello, board. I'm so excited to be here. My name is Joanna Kramer. I am a counselor in the College and Career Readiness Department. And tonight we're gonna be doing the California College Guidance Initiative Information Report. Okay. So this is our why, right there. And then these are collective commitments. And tonight we're gonna be focusing on communicate and collaborate effectively. You know, usually I have someone doing this for me. There we go. Okay, and then our focus for the sites for the 21, 22 school year are at least 75% of the Visalia Unified School of Class of 2027 will be college and career ready on the state dashboard. Okay, so what is CaliforniaColleges.edu? CaliforniaColleges.edu. Well, first, California College Guidance Initiative is the organization that oversees the use of CaliforniaColleges.edu. So CaliforniaColleges.edu offers college, career, and financial aid planning information, curriculum, tools. Students can track A through G requirement progress, track CSU and UC eligibility, launch and track college and financial aid applications, discover college and career goals, and explore potential career paths. Students have accounts within CaliforniaColleges.edu. And tonight I'm gonna be highlighting a couple of things that they have access to. This is the academic planner. Students can track, they can keep track of their grades, they can plan courses for high school, and they can learn about high school course requirements. Right here, on this area right here, there is a, it says add a course. So when a student clicks that plus sign, it shows Visalia Unified courses. And they can select a course and they can plan electives or they can plan future courses for high school as well. Also, within the student accounts is the eligibility tools. Students can track their progress toward meeting eligibility for CSU and UC. And once a green check mark shows over the area, the A through G subject area has been satisfied. And that is right there. Okay, so also within the eligibility tools. So we have a partnership with the APs of Curriculum Instruction on each campus, and each year we make sure the courses in Power School match the course management portal. This is super important because when the courses match, but actually when the students launch their applications for within their CaliforniaColleges.edu account, their transcript data populates over to the Cal State Applied application as verified transcript data. Okay, so the courses populate to the correct subject areas for them, which eliminates student error. So before CaliforniaColleges.edu, students would have to input those courses manually. So this eliminates a ton of error. Also, within the student accounts, the students have access to assessments. So there are six assessments on CaliforniaColleges.edu. And assessments allow students to discover their learning style, discover careers tailored to their interests, encourage students to form their work values, discover areas of potential and growth, and make informed decisions about their future. Parents also have access to accounts. And parents with accounts on CaliforniaColleges.edu, they can track their students' CSU and UC eligibility, track their students' A through G requirement progress, learn about college admission requirements, financial aid, and career opportunities, and have access to their students' goals as well as their college and career plans. This is what the family dashboard looks like. And right here is where their students would be, their names of their students would be on there. Educators also have accounts on CaliforniaColleges.edu. Educators with accounts, they can track CSU, UC, and community college applications. They can track FASDA and California Dream Act applications, track student A through G requirement progress, track CSU and UC student eligibility, and they can manage student accounts. I'm gonna pass it over to Paige, thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'm Paige Leverin. I am one of the counselors with College and Career Readiness. And I'm gonna discuss where we were with California colleges and where we're going in the future. So we have been with California colleges since 2018. We had a strong start with our middle schools and our high school seniors. And then we had the pandemic. So just as we started getting the momentum going, things kind of went awry. We felt it was best last year to freeze everything with California colleges and let our parents, students, teachers, and school sites do what they needed to do to get through last year. So we're back. We're currently partnering with our middle schools and high schools to roll out the career education component of CaliforniaColleges.edu. Currently, 98% of our middle school and high school students have registered accounts. The career education lessons include videos that we've created in partnership with Zach Green, along with activities for CaliforniaCollege.edu. Currently for the high school, our plans are for freshmen to focus on growth mindset and career exploration. Sophomores, we're focusing in on their major as it relates to their career interests. Juniors are focusing in on college exploration and how to complete college applications. Seniors, we're working with them on college and FASFA, launching their applications from California colleges, which then allows our counselors and school sites to be able to monitor who's applying, where they're applying, and where they are in that process. We're also focusing in on growth mindset with our seniors to make sure that they have those skills when they go off to a four-year university, that they're ready to tackle those challenges. Right now, we're in the process of rebuilding scheduled activities on California colleges at the middle schools with expectations of a full rollout in fall of 2022. This year, La Jolla Middle School is running a pilot program with avid eighth graders for students to create a four-year plan for high school. In other words, they will get a chance to look at what classes are offered in high school, how the electives relate to their career interests, and actually make a conscious effort to look at how electives that they choose can input on that exploration. I want to thank Amanda Richard, Diana Cotta, Anna Salazar, and Melissa Garcia for working with us and making this happen. Currently, training has been given to all middle and high school counselors along with APs of Student Services at the high schools. We've offered parent training webinars and also provided a video of the training on our YouTube channel and through our monthly college and career newsletter. We look forward to working with our area administrators and principals to make sure that every student has access to CaliforniaColleges.edu and the career videos. And that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Does any board member have any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you and I'm really impressed with this. And thank you for, we asked for a goal for college and career ready and you got it on there. And I also want to thank the whole curriculum department because I love how you keep the goals in front of us. You know, we know what we're shooting for, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
Yeah, I just want, I know there are a lot of time goes into this, so I just appreciate that. I don't think, no one sees the behind-the-scenes time invested and our kids' future is worth the invested time and I just appreciate it so much.
Thank you, Joy. All right, thank you very much.
Our next item on the agenda is I'd Ready Report, Second Diagnostic Results, enclosure number three.
I was actually gonna ask about how parents get their thing, account, like where, do they, do they know how to do that and where to go?
The questions for the presenters that just presented.
Sorry. The question is about the parent account. Obviously, we're all very interested. And so is there instruction somewhere for the parents to go to to figure out how to log in, create an account, all that kind of stuff?
So currently, we did a parent night. We have a videotape, a video of that parent night on the YouTube so that parents can refer to that on how to set up the parent account. But per se, for step-by-step instructions, no. But I can add that to our website with the other instructions that we have on there.
That'd be awesome. And then when you are saying YouTube, you're meaning the Visalia Unified School District YouTube page?
No, we have our own website for college and career. You can get it, get to it through the Visalia Unified website. If you go under parent or student and then go down to college and career. And on that, you can link up with our YouTube channel. And we have different areas for elementary, middle, high school, parents, and then CTE. So all our events for the last year and a half that we've done through Zoom, we've put on that YouTube channel so people can refer back to them. Also, the videos that we've created with Zach Green, we're placing that on that site as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, that's, that's amazing. I, so you said, okay, can you just go through that one more time, how you get to the YouTube?
Go to the Visalia Unified website. And on the top strip, it'll say different options. One says parent, one says student. You can go under either one.
Okay.
Drop down to college and career. When you get on there, you can follow, there's two areas to go to. You can go to our CTE area or to our college and career. The college and career is the one with the little graduation cap. You keep clicking on that one, it'll take you to that page.
Great, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
So how about, and yes, because I think it's wonderful. So how about students? Are they, do they know, like do counselors go through it with them that they've all been on there? They already have accounts or is it something they have to set up?
For California colleges? Okay, so we are introducing that during class time. Like I said, we're trying to get things reestablished. We're currently working with the middle school counselors to do a lesson. Let me back up. To do a lesson basically with the social science teachers at the middle schools. Prior to the pandemic, we had met with the principals of the middle schools and they decided through social science would be the best delivery. And so we've created some videos and some handouts. And so that's going out this next month and should be happening. We're currently waiting for the last couple of videos from Zach. And then we will be rolling that out at the high schools as well. There'll be a video lesson followed by activity on California colleges. Two in the freshman year, once in the fall, once in the spring. Sophomore year, the same thing, one in the fall, one in the spring. Junior year, the same thing, senior year, the same thing. We also, when the college and career newsletter comes out, I do email that to all seventh through 12th graders. And each month, we are talking about California colleges and reminding them that there are accounts there. So we're trying to build a culture. We're starting from scratch. We really appreciate the support that everyone has given us in this process. It's gonna take a little while, but we're getting there and we're really happy with what we're seeing.
So real quick, just to piggyback on that to answer your question, we create accounts for the students. It comes from Power School and then the student has to register their account. And that is all happening onsite.
And so does the student have to register? And so does the student have to register their account before a parent can get one as well? And so even though I know you started this with junior high, do, does everyone in the district have access to this now?
All seventh through twelfth graders have accounts. They have been registered. Shout out to Alma, Alma, sorry. Alma in our office, she's been helping us register the student accounts. So it's one less obstacle that they have to jump through. And then our videos that we're sending out show them how to get onto the website and how to navigate it.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is iReady Report, Second Diagnostic Results, enclosure number three.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, members of the Board, Inter-Superintendent Pardoza, my name is Andre Pacino. I'm the Administrator of Curriculum and Instruction. And just before, I want to thank the team that just came up. They're a small but mighty group, and they are doing tremendous work for our students, opening doors. You'll have a board line coming up this Friday with a newsletter they give that's emailed to parents, both in English and Spanish. And so it gives them, every month they receive that, and it gives them a ton of information. So I want to just thank them publicly. So we're going to go over the iReady Diagnostic Number Two. And so remember, back in the fall, we had the first diagnostic, and that was to measure where students at as they're coming into the school year. Then so now we gave a diagnostic back at the end of semester one. And this is telling us, okay, after one semester, where are the students at at this point, right? And so remember, last year, we did take the iReady twice. And the reason why we're not displaying the data today is because that was taken under different circumstances. The students took it at home. We know that the data was not necessarily clean or clear. And so this is really the first time that we have students taking it in class, in person, for both tests. So there, it's a like-for-like. In the past, it wouldn't have been that way. And so we will definitely continue to display all the data. But today, we're going to only focus on this year's data. So I want to be transparent about that. So again, this is our learning journey for today, our wide focus, iReady Assessment Overview, the focus on mathematics and focus on literacy. And then any questions? Our why, just like our last team brought up, is, is that our department is committed to a continuous improvement model. And that means that we're going to look at data, and we're going to dig deep, and we're going to find out what are the root causes? Why are we doing well in some areas? And why is it that we might be needing some, there's some areas of growth? And neither one is, is bad, right? We need to be able to look at both and be able to identify the shining stars and also the places where we need to work on. And so that's what we're doing today. Our collective commitments are that we're, we're going to be vulnerable and honest. We're going to be problem solvers and thinking outside the box, and we're going to lead and own the areas of responsibility. And that's these tests. Our focus for, for the sites for twenty-one, twenty-two is, the first one on top is around academics. And that's that we have our English learners, our focus on English learners, and they'll see why. Is that they organize and elaborate their written responses, thoughts, and engage in collaborative conversations in all content areas. And then thank you for the board in your direction that the goal is seventy-five percent of VSU, Visalia Unified School District Class of twenty-twenty-seven will be college and career ready. And so that is something that we're striving for. And of course, we have our arts, and we're focused very much on our arts and also on building our libraries that we heard this cited, talk about tonight. So just real quick, just for a brief recap, the iReady, there's all kinds of assessments that happen in a student's life during the year. Everything from minute by minute, that's a teacher asking questions. You know, seeing where, where students at in the learning that day, all the way to the state assessments at the end, the annual, right? But the state assessment shouldn't be a surprise for us if we're monitoring what's happening throughout the year. And so iReady gives us that interim benchmark, a dip in time, about a third of the way each time through the year to see where students are at. And so that's what we're going to look at tonight. So it's a snapshot, right? It's a snapshot in time. The Assessment Overview, again, what is iReady test for? It identifies students' current grade level and their grade level readiness. And at this point in time, remember last time that we met with diagnostic one, students shouldn't have mastered the standards yet because they're starting at the beginning of the year. So then if they're at the midpoint, then they should be about fifty percent of the way through. So we're not going to see a lot of green yet because they would have to be at the end of the year, right? Our kids, and they are, trust me, more than capable of being geniuses. But you know, they still have like another half a year to still master standards, right? So that's where, that's where. So you have this table, and I apologize that it's really small. But what we wanted to do was to show you paired scores. This is growth. So one of the things that we heard the board loud and clear is to look at growth, right? To look at where are we growing? And so this first column here that I'm pointing out says overall D1, that was the fall. That was the number of students who were early on grade level, mid or above grade level, okay? And then this column here is D2, all right? And the highlighted part, what you see is some of these numbers here might be a little bit off. It's because those are paired scores. So those are the students who took both one and two, okay? Overall, in each of the tests, we have over ninety percent participation. But because they're paired, you'd see a couple of them, they're like in the high eighties because one might have taken one in the fall but not in the, the second one, or vice versa, right? So I wanted just to lay that groundwork. My, my team members are actually going to do the, the next slides, but just so you can see the difference in why that's highlighted. So I'm going to go ahead and bring up Ms. Phillips.
Good evening. I'm Brienne Phillips, Director of STEM for Visalia Unified. As Mr. Pacina shared with you, we are here tonight to review data from our iReady Second Diagnostic Exam. On this slide, we present to you the percentage of students by academic grade who are on grade level or above grade level. So as Mr. Pacina indicated, our first diagnostic exam versus our second diagnostic exam, and we see growth in all grade levels at this time of the percent of students who are on grade level now. What we additionally see in here is the two that are highlighted in green have ten percent growth in that grade level. As you dive deeper into the data and analyze each of the clusters, you will see growth, greater growth in the clusters where instructional focus was in the fall semester. Here we see student performance data disaggregated by student group. Although there has been growth in all groups, which you can see on the far right, we can see that our English learners, special education, and African-American student growth is disproportionate to our English-only students. This data guides us in our continuous improvement process as we focus our instructional supports. On this slide, we present to you all of our elementary and middle schools. I know it's really small, and I apologize for that. Here you can see that every school site saw a minimum of thirty percent growth of their students' performance level. So I want to indicate to you, we put the colored graph down on the bottom here is that the growth is, we are, each school site moves thirty percent of their students from one band to the next band or one level to the next level. That does not mean that there wasn't growth within the levels. For example, if I were a fifth-grade teacher and I had a student who tested at a kindergarten level in math, I could have moved that student in the first semester up to a second-grade level. But I would not have moved that student yet out of that dark red band. So our teachers are doing great work, our intervention teachers are doing great work in moving within those bands. But maybe we haven't seen as many students jump all the way to the next band. So with this being said, we're out learning from our school sites, trying to see what is being implemented and what is yielding the results that we, that we have seen from Diagnostic One to Diagnostic Two. So here are a few great instruction, instructional moves or systematic moves that we're seeing at sites. So we are seeing that implant, the implementation of Do the Math. And this is being taught with teachers using some ELO funds, as well as retired teachers are out supporting our school sites. There is a focus on vertical alignment with teachers. Many data chats are happening. Additionally, there, we are incorporating iReady daily into our instructional minutes to provide a focused, individualized lessons. These are some of the components that were shared by Denton, Shannon Rant, and Ivan Hill. And on this slide, we look at a snapshot of the remainder of our school year. It is kind of always interesting to me that we're so close, even though it's only February. We're so close to the end of the school year. It goes so quickly from here out. So what you see here is on the top of our timeline are all of the supports from outside companies or resources that we utilize. So you see a lot of our CV NIC training, as well as IXL training that you'll see throughout the remainder of the school year. On the bottom, those are all supports that are provided in-house through our Curriculum and Instruction Department. And where we will be out coaching for the remainder of the year. If there are school sites that you don't see on there, it's not because we are not providing supports to them. It's because we have been out providing supports to them previous to today. And so this is just what we're looking at from here on out. And I'm going to pass this on to Ms. Ardon Diaz.
Good evening. I'm Claudia Ardon Diaz, Director of Literacy. And as my partner, Ms. Phillips, shared with you, we are reviewing that data for that, comparing that Diagnostic One to the Diagnostic Two exam. So as we look at this data for literacy, we are again looking at the students, the, the percentage of students by academic grade level who are either early on grade level or above grade level. And as we compare that data, really, what really stands out is that we are so proud of our teachers and of that work in our site administration of what they're doing. We've been through so much this year, and in spite of all of that, they've been doing such wonderful work that encompasses the teachers, our intervention teachers like Ms. Carrasco, who've been doing wonderful work, and our site administration as well. As we take a closer look at our data, we also know that we have areas of strengths and areas where we have need. Our areas of strength here, we can definitely see those highlighted areas in second and third grade. And that doesn't go unnoticed, and that happens because of that laser-like focus in regards to providing those interventions to students specifically in that, in those grade levels, because you want to get them to be readers. Our teachers have worked really hard on that. In addition to that, our intervention teachers continue to work hard in providing those targeted supports. And we'll talk more about that in just a little bit. In this particular slide, we also see the student performance data disaggregated by student groups. And just like Ms. Phillips mentioned, there has been great growth, as you see in that last column. We're super excited about that. But we also know that there's areas of need. Specifically, I'm here to advocate for English learners, special education, and students that are homeless. Those when we compare to English-only, they're definitely are not matching to that English-only student. They're definitely lower than them. This data helps us because now that we have this, we can definitely plan our support to school sites. Again, as Ms. Phillips mentioned, this is the data that represents the growth that our sites have made, moving students, but now in literacy. Here you can see that all of our, our sites, again, have done wonderful, and they've definitely have moved our students a minimum of twenty-nine percent growth of their student performance level. So what we're celebrating is in spite of the pandemic, we can see from here that students, at least teachers have moved at least twenty-nine percent of their students one band level or more. This is quite a celebration. But we're also learners, and this is a continuous improvement cycle. So as we go to sites, as we engage in conversations with administrators and they're onsite and they're learning, they're, they're telling us what's working. For example, they're sharing their instructional moves. They're saying really that having students having academic goals is a plus. So that goal setting is super important. Also, that small group targeted intervention is really, really necessary. That focus and that responsive literacy, that not all the students get the same, but really that focus on that we're responsive to the needs of each student, they also said was a must. In addition, they shared that teachers learning from other teachers was really effective. Having interventions with internet intentionality, really using data and being very targeted in regards to their, their, their interventions. And also really going back to what they know, and those are professional learning communities, PLCs. They reminded us of the importance of really having strong teams to form those common assessments and really reviewing the data and the next steps. So as we look from now until the remainder of the year, we're going to, again, refine what we're doing. We're going to continue with what we know is working and continue to refine. We're going back to those interactive read-alouds with coaching teachers at the school sites. And what you will see here is that, as Ms. Phillips mentioned, not all school sites are, are in this little particular graph here. And that's because some school sites have already been serviced. We did this by the amount of English learners. So we went from the highest need, because that's a highest amount of English learners, and we moved our way backwards. So as you, we move throughout the year, you will see that the stools, the schools that are at the end have the least amount. So we're going to continue with that coaching. We're also going to continue with TICO and their readership grant. We're going to continue that, that partnership with them, collaborating with intervention toses, and really working with ELIs and our English language development, going back to really that being one of our biggest areas that we're focusing on this year.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips and Ms. Ardon Diaz. And so I just want to leave you with this quote here. It says, "Every student deserves a great teacher, not by chance, but by design." And so great teachers like Mrs. Carrasco that's here today, right? And many others in our district, they spend countless hours digging through the data, planning their lessons with what their students need most. And so it's important that as we look at this data, it's not just, we don't test just a test, but we test, look at the data so it can help inform our next moves for the next semester. And so it's, so I want to make sure that, that, you know, folks understand that it's really important that as we look at this, even though it's a snapshot in time, it's really yielding really important information for us, right? And so our schools are looking at that, our principals are, they're working with their teachers. So I want to just, again, just agree with my, my colleagues that we wouldn't be here today, right, in, in this situation of growth without our teachers working hard, our site leaders and our district leaders. Do we have a lot, a lot of more room to grow? We do. I mean, let's be honest, right? We have to, we have to grow more. But we also just came out of a really tough situation and pandemic. And yet we see students moving forward, right? Where months ago, when I first came here, it was almost like, oh, are students stuck? Or are they going to be moving backwards? But they're actually showing us that they're, they're that growth mindset, that, that persistence, right? That grit, they're showing us that, and that's so important. So again, we're a continuous improvement department, and so we're looking at this data to dig deep to find those, those bright spots, but as well as those areas of growth. This, I want to say thank our amazing team. Here are two directors, our coordinator Lori Dirksen, and especially our, our teachers on special assignment that are listed there. They're so key and so important to the work because they're there in the classrooms with the teachers, coaching them. And we, we definitely honor that, that model. And they're, they're just for the teachers to coach. So a lot of that work that you see, that growth is really because of our toses. And so I want to thank them publicly tonight. And with that said, are there any questions?
Any board member have any questions or comments?
I have a question. I know on slide twelve, some of the English Language Arts data was grayed out on phonological awareness. Is that because they're not assessed after a third grade?
Yeah, they're not assessed after that grade.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I just want to say thank you, and I want to give an applause to our teachers. We have a lot to celebrate. Thank you. And I want to see, can you invite me to an ELD number talk, numbers talk? I want to see one. That sounds so amazing.
Of course, we'll work with our toses to align that for you.
Any other board member, Ms. Katie?
So yes, on, on kind of that idea of we do have fabulous things happening out there. And last time I know with College and Career Ready, she, you know, Vicky talked about kind of that outlier idea of Corcoran, but I know we have fabulous things going on here. So like, is there a way that we can look at data and see, you know, where are those? I mean, there's probably tons of them, but just those bright spots where we really see that responsive literacy or, you know, teachers that are building conceptual math or, you know, working in teams, working with CGI, and kind of like have our curriculum team visit those bright spots and bring back that information? Because, you know, then how do we kind of spread that through our district? Because there's, you know, awesome things happening. So I would just, you know, maybe. So I would just, you know, maybe want or task the if the curriculum directors and team. And I know toses are out all the time, but just really highlighting some of the practices that are happening here, you know, so that we can build on those. So that's the one comment. And then I do have to say why we don't have a coordinator in literacy. Are we, is that open or?
That's something definitely we we are looking at to be able to see. It's moving into K-12 model, right? It, we did do a shift from having in the previous model where it was more secondary and elementary. Both these directors here, they're actually, they're K-12. And so the our STEAM director focuses on K-12, and then also our literacy director focuses on K-12. So that's definitely something, you know, I could look at.
I just think with EL, we have struggled forever with, you know, EL. And it seems like, you know, there's also one less court, one less TOSA. But I don't know if that's something, you know, that's your department, but something that something that we could look at, because I think with ELRIS and supporting teachers coming out of that, how do we, you know, get them the support?
Definitely. Thank you. Noted. And just from the previous comment as well, we are looking at the at the data, but we can definitely go out to just to sites to be able to see, hey, what are those bright spots doing? And then and then definitely report back to all of you to see what what is happening. And we had Ms. Ardon Diaz had principals today with the admin literacy strand, and they were actually sharing even more than was on that slide. You know, a lot of them were really collaborating today, and they were, they were even talking to themselves like, hey, we want to be able to learn from each other. So really building that innovation is key, right, to releasing us grow.
Any other board member comments or questions? Okay, we do have one public comment, and that would be Barbie Wilcox, Delia.
So as Ms. Smart is getting ready, I know that Ms. Gamoyen mentioned about having to enjoy maybe some ELD instruction or an ELD number talk. We would love to invite anybody who would love to see our amazing teachers conducting an interactive read aloud, really how they are really developing that vocabulary. And that's specifically the vocabulary, that comprehension with literature and nonfiction text. So we would love to invite you. That would be, they're doing great work.
Thank you.
President Guerrero. My apologies, I've tried her three times and her line is busy.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on with our agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item on the, excuse me, our next item on the agenda is general public comment on any school review topic may be heard at this time. The board asked that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. Pursuant to board policy, the board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes, and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. And as I mentioned at the last previous meeting, I will stick with the three-minute limit. Our first person in line is Crystal Reynolds.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Cardoza. My name is Crystal Reynolds, and I am the mother of three with two children in the district. In December, I served the board an inquiry of questions that your constituents have of you. This was not only my questions, but questions of your fellow, my fellow constituents, members of Unmasked Larry County, staff, students. Can you guys hear me? Like, it's kind of going in. Okay. So anyways, tonight, we are preparing a new notice for you guys. I'm gonna kind of read a little summary of it so you guys know what it's about, and then I will have Ms. Brewer serve you guys. So please take notice that people hold all the power in the state, and their constitutional rights are being violated by Governor Newsom's unlawful emergency order. First, it was guidance, then it was a standard, and finally, it was a mandate. Policy by press release is not constitutional. The rights of the people to determine their own personal choices are preserved by the US Constitution, and those rights are common to all the people across the nation, regardless of there being no specific provision included in any single state constitution. Please take further notice that as a parent, grandparent, taxpayer, and/or concerned citizen, this document serves as the first step in your re-education about your responsibilities as representatives for the schools, districts, and the charters by we, the people. We are the voters, we are the parents, grandparents, extended family, employees, and all of concerned people having regard for these school districts and charters. Our children are precious, and we will no longer tolerate the unconstitutional extortion of their rights by authoritarian edits. Please take notice that this is a remonstrance of this board, which is compromised of elective trustees who have been placed in their positions by we, the people. As such, you are hereby ordered presently and into the future to cease and desist the following activities. One, mandating the following actions: experimental COVID-19 injections as a requirement for continued employment and/or for continued attendance in classrooms, including if required, presentation of a document providing such vaccinations have been obtained. Number two, discarding and disregarding constitutional choices and rights regarding creeds, religious objections, personal choice, and previous exposure and recovery from the disease when presented either verbally or in document form. And number three, ignoring federal and state laws that guard the constitutional rights of the people, including their children, to remain safe and secure from harm. And further, it is hereby ordered that the total amount of federal funds that have been received in exchange for the adoption of these unlawful and unconstitutional executive orders is to be publicly and prominently displayed, and the agreement and contracts be made available for viewing by the public without fees or any other impediment required. You, the board, are now officially served by we, the people.
Okay, our next public comment is Melissa Brewer.
Short walk. All right. My name is Melissa Brewer, and three minutes is not very long to defend the life of your child. But I will do my best. By Salya Unified School Board, when you know better, you should do better. The USD School Board, you now know better. Now you have to find the courage to do better. In the past two weeks, we have seen our governor attend a football game with more than all of our student population combined, and he was not wearing a mask. He lied, and he said that he only took it off for a picture, but yet we all saw the images of the truth. Countless other politicians enforcing mask mandates have done similar things and flaunted it. Excuses have ranged from the lies of photo ops to my personal favorite, I held my breath. Well, school board trustees, our children have been holding their breath behind completely useless masks since they were allowed to return to school campuses over a year ago. And now we know better. We now know that there is no scientific study that supports masks in schools lowering transmission rates among students. And we also know that politicians do not follow the rules of masking that are forced upon our children. Unfortunately, that includes this very board of trustees and our interim superintendent. I have the receipts. I am not here to tell you how badly I think you've screwed this up, although I will admit, I believe you've done more damage than you can possibly imagine. I'm not here to personally insult you, although I have been personally insulted by many of you more than times than I can count. I am here tonight to defend the life of my child and every single USD student, something you should also be doing. You may not like it when parents show up and remind you of your responsibilities or criticize your actions, but let me tell you what I do not like. I do not like that you are completely apathetic to the damage you are doing to my child and the children of this district. I am angry. And although I have been attacked from every possible angle, I will never back down, and neither will the parents behind me. These are our kids, and I will make use of every last breath in my body to defend my child. Like it or not, you are all politicians elected to do a job. You each took an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States. Currently, you are each in violation of the United States Constitution when it comes to defending it against foreign enemies and domestic enemies. We are currently under the authority of a domestic dictator who has imposed a two-year emergency order that is unconstitutional. You vowed to defend freedom. It's time that you quit cowering behind the emergency order and the unelected bureaucrats and admit that it's not that you cannot do anything to stop the mask made mandate, it's that you won't. You have a choice. You are not following the law. You know better. It's time to do better. Thank you.
Mr. Joseph Beaton, Delia.
Good evening. I am Joseph Beaton, hospital laboratory scientist, area seven resident, and the father of a kindergartner. I can see you guys on the Zoom meeting there. I have not prepared any speech. I'm just going completely off script here, so beware. Well, we've spent the last eight months exchanging me talking, you listening, and you guys not responding. There's not been a single responsive substance from anyone on the board in, in, let's see, six months. It all ended about August. You don't respond to emails. You don't share any data. You don't invite any experts in to discuss coronavirus restrictions. You just sit up there with your ridiculous-looking masks and play along with this theater of the facial decorations. This is all political. So our group has decided to not make this about health, science, and medicine, same way as you guys have. We're going to get rid of y'all. It's, I will devote as much money as I can to putting the, towards the campaigns of any involved parents that want to run for school board. The board has failed us. The board says they're doing everything that they can. We don't know that you're doing anything. You're just waiting for somebody to say it's okay to stop suffocating our children. My daughter Lily is suspended or put on isolation more days than she attends school. She's that little five-year-old in front of you guys. She's got terrible behavior problems, does not remember life before these dumb masks, does not have the right amount of interaction with her teacher, who she physically assaults repeatedly. I don't want violent assaults going on. I don't endorse that kind of behavior. I don't, it's, it's not the way we do things. But Lily has been expelled from six private preschools before coming to you guys. You guys hold all the money, you hold all the power, and all I see you do with it is wasted. You have all this power, and you do nothing. Well, I think by three minutes, it's close to being up. So God bless you all. Do the right thing. I hope none of you are here in 2023, except for the two members that will work on in the following years. God bless you all. Bye-bye.
Our next public comment is Mr. Greg Price.
Good evening, School Board, President Guerrero, Board members, staff. This week, I hope to be shortened to the point. I'm going to start with nobody likes wearing masks, and nobody likes these rules. There are some people who believe mask wearing keeps them safe. There are some who believe mask wearing doesn't work, and nobody should wear them. And I'm not sure what the right answer is to that. I'm not an epidemiologist, and I'm not a doctor. Here's what I do know. One, mask wearing for public schools being required by the CDPH. Not wearing a face mask for our district and not telling our kids and our staff that they don't have to wear them might have consequences. For the USD, I know your lawyers have advised them that the intentional disregard for the CDPH order could void the USD liability coverage. The intentional disregard for the CDPH order could result in the loss of our California school funding. These are both catastrophic kinds of things that could happen. Would they happen? I don't know. But your job is to keep us physically solvent. My lawyers have advised me that if any of my teachers intentionally disregard the CDPH order, they could be held personally liable without coverage. I would tell them that is not a thing they want to do. What some are asking is that the USD intentionally disregard the CDPH order. We have 28,000-plus students in our district. If something awful would happen to one of them, the damage that could be done to the student or staff member could be awful, and it could be also a potentially catastrophic financial event. At the current time, there are other teachers and parents who would not attend our schools if people aren't wearing masks. So what do we tell them? My estimate is 100 to 300 of our teachers. Many management and classified employees would not come to in-person classes of masks for optional. I do not believe we would be able to staff schools under this condition. A polar opposite point of view is there are some people who think that everybody should be vaccinated and should be boosted to even come to school. What if a bunch of parents came and asked for that to happen? Okay, that is, it's just a polar opposite, and I am not endorsing that position. I'm telling you, that's something else that a group of parents could come and ask. I would tell you, for better or worse, we are following CDPH orders. If people want to protest, take the fight to the governor and the people and representatives who can make that change, because it's not you. There, I'll have a list back on the table of who you can call. So thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, and that is consent agenda. Is there any board member that would like to pull an item? Mr. Vegas?
Yes, I would like to pull enclosure number four.
Anybody else? Any other enclosures?
What's that?
It's the warrant list.
Who's pulling the warrant list? Enclosure number four. Any other board members? Okay, do I have a motion to?
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Naylor, who's second over here?
I did.
Okay, Ms. Case for Seleno second, all in favor?
Student. Student Board Member Velazquez, she's texting her Zen, right? Her vote.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. It's just my camera that's not working.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, did you hear, we're approving, there was a motion to approve the consent agenda, except for the warrant list, number four.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Board Member Case for Soleno?
Yes.
Board Member Gabby?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
Board Member Vegas?
I'd like to abstain.
Okay. Motion carries six, student board member voting yes, six yeas, and one abstention.
Okay, enclosure number four, Mr. Vegas?
Yes, I would just like to abstain. I think I abstained on the wrong vote. But I would like to abstain because I have a family member, and I'm still awaiting legal counsel as advice on how to move for this matter moving forward. But I have a family member who is employed by someone who does business with the district, and therefore I would like to recuse myself from approving anything on the warrant list, because their company is on this warrant list.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept this?
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Case for Soleno, second by Ms. Blair.
Student Board Member Velazquez?
I vote yes.
Board Member Case for Soleno?
Yes.
Board Member Gabby?
Yes.
I vote yes. Board Member Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
Board Member Vegas?
Abstain.
And Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Motion carries six yeas, one extension, student board member votes yes.
Our next item on the agenda is public hearing by Salya Unified School Teacher Association. Interest initial proposal for certificate negotiations. This is a second read, enclosure number 26, Mr. Greg Price, and I will open the public hearing. Mr. Price? Mr. Price.
But I'm ready. Let's see, the 2022-23 VUTA sunshine proposals. VUTA and VUSD mutually agree to open the following articles: Article eight for class size, Article ten for salaries, Article twelve employee benefits. The UTA will open Article three, safety conditions of employment, and Article five, hours of employment. The UTA has an interest in examining class sizes to further enhance the educational experience of our students. The UT also seeks to create a salary and benefits package that is competitive with surrounding districts. The purpose of maintaining a strong compensation package is to ensure that the USD will be able to attract and retain the best educators available for our students. Another focus in bargaining is to place language in the contract regarding special education and best practices for handling interventions and disruptive student behavior. This segment of our schoolwork affects nearly all educators and students as we continue to place our special ed students in the least restrictive environment. It is our expectation that we do what is best for students and support our teaching professionals in this endeavor. And lastly, it is imperative we work in the most collaborative way possible and jointly make decisions to ensure our students and educators have the necessary time, tools, and resources to provide academic success, social, emotional support, and safe conditions for teaching and learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have, is there any comments by any board members, any questions or comments?
As this is a second read.
This is the second.
I like to move.
It is an action item.
I like to move.
I have two RSVPs.
I'm sorry.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, public comment on this item would be Melissa Brewer.
Two weeks ago, I watched this school board meeting from home, and I was astonished to discover the rumors are true. The teachers' union, specifically VUTA, really does hate parents. Hey Greg Price, it's nice to see you again here tonight. I understand you do not love being questioned or challenged at your job. That is okay. That is fair. I don't think any of us like it. But let me tell you something right now. Your job is not to harm my child or any of the other children in our district. Your job is not to threaten the teachers either. Especially the teachers who possess an accurate sense of morality, who see the harm being done to our children and are taking action quietly in their classrooms to bring back life to the classrooms and breath. These teachers are actually heroes who are on the right side of history, which is more than I can say for you right now. So teachers, I want you to listen very carefully to what I have to say. As a mom and an educator myself, I see you and I know that at least some of you know how deeply wrong the action of masking children is. Two weeks ago, at this very board meeting, President Greg Price launched a bizarre tantrum toward parents and caregivers speaking against the masking and mandatory vaccination of these non-FDA approved vaccinations. Included in his three-minute fit were threats of personal liability, doom and gloom toward teachers who are quietly dismissing the tyrannical mandates of masking every single second in their classroom in the interest of the health of our students. The school board also defended themselves with the mandatory masking as just doing their job and what they legally have to do. I was just doing my job. I was just following orders. These are all things said by participants in the world's greatest atrocities throughout history. While this may pacify those who wish to follow these draconian and impotent measures, it will not shield any teacher, administrator, board member, or any other adult who inflicts long-term hurt against these innocent beings, our children. Ignorance of malice does not shield one from the personal and moral liability associated with one's actions, and it likely legally will not shield anyone in the future when the damage has already been done. Historically, the defense we didn't know has not been enough of a defense to protect one from personal condemnation, or that matter, criminal liability. I'm going to ask you teachers, and I'm not trying to paint you as predators, but I'm going to ask because it's not what I believe. But I'm going to ask you all, including all of you administrators and board members. Are you prepared to answer to the innocent children who trusted you and say, I was more afraid of how it might hurt me to break these rules and fight back against them than I was concerned on how my inaction might hurt you? Last meeting, VUTA pitted teachers' personal interests against the well-being of their students. That's simply despicable. Parents and teachers should always be on the same side when it comes to the well-being of the kids. That's non-negotiable. Your students, the future of this country are depending on you. Teachers, if this board won't step up, it's on you to do it, and principals to say, we're not going to enforce the mask mandates. Stop the enforcement. It's just that simple. Will you be a hero or a villain in the memory of your students? The answer is up to you.
Next person is Crystal Reynolds.
Good evening, board. Again, I wanted to address some comments that were made to the board last week following my three minutes of public comment from the VUTA president Greg Price. The comments presented to the board were in opposition to parental choice when it comes to state guidance for masks. Mr. Price threatened the loss of liability coverage and/or personal liability for non-compliance with state mask guidance. General liability typically covers injury or death at your location of coverage. In these trying times, anyone who has liability insurance has been informed that there is no specific coverage for COVID-19 claims. What is at risk for claims is the mental abuse of children and the physical injury from increased CO2 retention. To clarify Mr. Price's threat, you are already at risk of liability in which the coverage does not exist. And I can tell you, I'm a business owner. When COVID shut my studio down, I went straight to insurance to find out what I needed to do liability-wise, and I will tell you, they will not touch COVID-19 with a 10-foot pole because you cannot prove transmission and you cannot prove intent. You cannot approve or you can't prove intent to spread. So I'm telling you guys right now, you're 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 at a much greater risk with parents suing because you're keeping these masks on. I will tell you something I did in my studio. I don't know if it will work for this district, but something to look into. At my studio, I had every single parent that came back on sign an assumption of risk liability form, and it's a two-way between me and the parents. The parents understand that when they bring their kids there, it's a risk because I have an optional mask policy and I've had it the whole time. So they understand when they're bringing their child to dance at my studio, there's an assumption of risk. And they also understand from my end, I'm not going to sue them because if they bring their family members in and they have COVID and they spread it at my studio, I'm not going to sue them. Why don't you look at an assumption of risk policy? Because like, I think it was Greg Price was saying, you got two polar opposites. You got the ones that want the mask that are forcing it on everybody. You got the ones that don't want it. Go with an optional mask policy, have everybody sign an assumption of risk form so that they can return and you guys are covered. But you will not be covered. You will definitely not be covered. Really, in any lawsuit that comes your way, it's always going to come your way. But again, just be mindful that we can we can work this. You just you have to be creative about it and 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 let's do what what the parents want. Give the parents a choice. Thank you.
Okay, this is an action item. We'll do the roll call. All in favor?
Was there a second?
Yeah, I'll second Ms. Naylor's motion.
Yeah, yeah. Motion by Ms. Naylor, second by Keesper Seleno.
Okay, student board member Velazquez?
Yes.
Board Member Gabby? I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
Board Member Vegas?
Yes.
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Board Member K. Spears Seleno?
Yes.
Motion carries seven oh, student board member voting yes.
I will close the public hearing, and I will move into enclosure number 27, public hearing by Celia Unified School District. Interest initial proposal for certificate negotiation, second read, and I'm opening the public hearing.
Good evening. Good evening, board, Board President Guerrero and interim superintendent Mr. Cardozo. My name is DeeDee Semavi. I'm Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and tonight I bring you our interest for negotiations for the 2223 school year. So California Government Code Article eight, Section 3457 requires public school districts and exclusive representatives to present our proposals here to the public at a public meeting prior to beginning negotiations. So that's what we're doing tonight. Again, this is a second read, so we're hoping that you approve this tonight. The district approaches the coming negotiations with the UTA with intent to negotiate a mutually agreeable contract through interest-based bargaining in order to address common interests and concerns in alignment with the district's vision, mission, and goals. The district's interests in entering into negotiations this year are to ensure students will experience a rich and balanced curriculum, ensuring students will have their social and emotional services and supports they need, to ensure students will be college and career-ready, increasing and improving services for students beyond the regular school day, supporting employees and maintaining staff at the most efficient and effective levels, maintaining district reserves to preserve the instructional program for all students during economic cycles, and to engage in open and honest exchange of information through collaboration and objective interest-based bargaining with the Visalia Teachers Association. We open mutually with the UTA Article eight class size, Article 10 salaries, and Article 12 employee employee benefits. We look forward to good faith negotiations with the district with Mr. Price and his team to move forward for the best interests of our students and our staff.
Does any board member have any comments or questions? Is there a motion?
I'd like to motion.
Motion by Mr. Vegas. Second by Ms. Blair. All in favor?
Board Member, Student Board Member Velazquez?
Yes.
Board President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
Board Member Vegas?
Yes.
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Board Member K. Spears Seleno?
Yes.
Board Member Gabby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries seven oh, student board member voting yes.
Thank you.
We'll close this public hearing and move on to our next enclosure. Our next item on the agenda is student representative report, Mireia Velazquez, Golden West High School.
Okay, I'll begin this evening's board report with VTech. Their ASB has been working on planning activities and newsletters to celebrate Black History Month, which is this month. And their FFA citrus judging team took second place overall at their state finals. Moving on to LD, last Wednesday and Friday, they had tailgates for their girls and girls' basketball and soccer as well. They provided tickets and tickets. They provided snacks and tickets into the games. They also hosted their winter rally with a New Year's and New York theme. And they will play Redwood tonight with a theme for the game being Neon. Moving on to Golden West, Golden West Athletics is hosting their senior nights this week, Tuesday night and Thursday night as well. The Golden West FFA is hosting a Kisa Cow fundraiser, and they are selling tickets to the Winter Formal that's going to be hosted this Saturday. Moving on to Mount Whitney, they're hosting Kindness Week this week, and they have been selling Valentine's grams during lunch to hand out on Friday. Golden or Mount Whitney's Drama Club performed their first big musical last week at the LJ Williams Theater with LD. And finally, moving on to Redwood, they their Boys and Girls Soccer and Basketball, I have their senior nights this week. Their mock trial, blue and silver teams made it to the semifinals for county competition, which will be happening very soon. And their FBLA will be competing in their annual Central Section Leadership Conference, and that concludes my board report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Velazquez. We really enjoy your report. You give us a lot of information of what's going on in the schools, and I think the board members really enjoy it, enjoy hearing you. Thank you. I will move on to board member reports request. Ms. Blair?
Thank you. I got to visit Shannon Ranch this week, actually, no, last week. Because, man, it's been a lot. Okay, so I got to be a judge for their spelling bee. It was awesome. It was so fun and intense. I had no idea how intense. I had to be the person that said, that word is correct, or that word is incorrect. And the whole room gasps. It was they those kids just had so much poise and did such a great job under pressure. It was just, it was awesome. And then I got to tour the school with Mrs. Binghamman, who is amazing, and they are doing such just awesome things in their classrooms. Their kids were engaged. They were happy to be at school. I got to be a part of their Wrangler roundup. And their community officer was there giving high fives to all the kids. It was just a great atmosphere. All, I mean, there were each teacher was really different. Some teachers had the kids take their shoes off before they went in class, and they just the kids felt like they were at home. They had personal goals on their desks. It was amazing. And then I got to also visit Houston School this week, which was awesome. Mr. Adrian Leal is amazing. And just these principals that are just all in for their school and have so much passion. And, you know, I love seeing a school where the kids will come up and hug the principal or show the principal what they've done or, you know, wave at them as soon as they walk in the in the school. It just shows that they're really invested and it, I mean, both of the schools that I got to visit were two thumbs up.
Mr. Vegas?
Thank you, President Guerrero. I wish you would have coordinated because I also got the opportunity to visit Houston and speak with Principal Leal. Yeah, and so I was really excited to hear a lot of the innovative ideas that they'd previously been doing with some of the LCAP money to provide additional instruction for music at the elementary. And so I thought that was just wonderful. And I also got to tour Mount Whitney. Was it yesterday or the day before? Like you, it's been a long week, and I got to speak to President, I'm sorry, President, Principal Aguilar there. And he's he, like me, has only recently come into that position, right? And so he's been working very hard, hitting the ground running, connecting with staff, with students. And it's what's really great is that he actually started it and was around to visit there on some of the elementary. So he actually recognizes some of those students that he initially started with. And so it's great. I'm looking forward to coming back to Mount Whitney and visiting other schools in the area. I wanted to provide a few updates. I know a few meetings back, I talked about, you know, an initiative on mental health. And so after communicating with staff and conducting research, you know, I learned that the governor has signed into law Senate Bill 14. And so though it doesn't specify a set number of days, as sort of I was proposing, this law came into law at the beginning of this year and quote, expands the excused absence due to illness to add, including an absence for the benefit of the people's mental or behavioral health. So I just want to ensure that everyone in our community knows about this policy change. And, you know, knows that if their student needs to take a day for their mental health, that they are allowed to do so and count that as an excuse absence. With Board Member Blair, I was able to attend CSBA new member training this past week, two very long days on Zoom, but very productive. We learned a lot about finance, a lot about how to effectively govern and work with our fellow colleagues on the board. And so looking forward to participating in future seminars and hopefully obtaining that master's in governance. And then two last things. I want to bring up that one of our community members and several of our community members have asked for increased transparency, right? And so someone brought it to my attention that some of our previous recordings of our board meetings are not currently up on our district YouTube page. And so in an effort to build trust with the community, with members of the public, I would like to ask our staff to investigate how we can draft an amended version of this board policy. It's, oh, sorry, Board Bylaw 9324. And I would like to amend this in order to make any and all of our previous recordings available to the public via our district YouTube channel and all future board meetings going forward. I hope this is an effort we can take as a board and an effort to not only increase transparency and trust, but to also make things accessible for working-class communities or for community members who recently moved to Visalia and want to learn more about what the district has been doing in previous meetings. And so they can catch themselves up to speed and be involved in their children's education and in this community process. And so I look forward to that, hopefully, on a future agenda, whether it's on our board policy committee or one of our regular board meetings. I think this is something that would be great for our community. And then finally, I just want to take a moment to recognize and congratulate our students at LD Amonte for a fantastic win at the Tulare County Academic Decathlon. This is their fourth straight consecutive win. I just think that's amazing. I think they have five in total. Yes. Next month, they're actually going to be moving on to represent Visalia and Tulare at the statewide competition. And so I've already communicated with Superintendent Cardozo. I think it would be wonderful to recognize these individuals. And I just want to take a moment to congratulate their coach as well, Mick Jolly, for this amazing accomplishment. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Keesper Seleno? Okay, Ms. Gabby?
Yeah, just want to say thank you to our staff again. And tonight we were talking math and literacy and data, and it just warms my heart. So thank you to our curriculum department.
Yeah, I want to echo that. I think our curriculum department is nice to hear what's going on and how hard you're working and all of our staff. I also want all of the board went to the planning session Saturday, so we spent the whole day. It was nice. Really drilled down on some of the issues that were that Really drilled down on some of the issues that were, that we need to be, make some hard decisions, and so it was nice to be able to really focus on. Some things that are, are going to happen in the future. So I really appreciate that. It was a nice, nice day. Um, I attended the VPY, and I want to give a shout out to VPY, which is our. Career Technical Education, and we had a Zoom meeting and showcased and highlighted some of our CTSO, our CTE pathways. And the students got on there, and that always warms my heart, because when I hear from students, it's like, oh, man, we are doing the right thing. And, and our teachers are really preparing these young high school students for the future. They spoke well. They were enthusiastic. They knew where they were going, and that's what career, college and career is all about. You know, getting that, that experience and knowing where you're going to go and have, and, and as our CTE. Staff explained tonight, we want them prepared for when they go out and they graduate, and, and they're doing that. It shows in their presentations. And just, just a great job. Thank you so much.
Ms. Camonian?
Um, I thought Saturday was wonderful. I want to thank Cabinet for that. We just really. We know the decisions that are coming up that we need to make on high school boundaries, and. It was just really good to, to talk about that. Um, I also went to Houston and would like to thank Mr. Leal and his, his staff. When, when we were walking in and out of costumes, you could just feel the family atmosphere in there. Um, I went to their assembly that morning, and he recognized his math scholars, which was amazing. Um, they also have a banner in their cafeteria with their AR reading, the kids that are reading up to their. They're reading their goal, whatever their goal is, and it was so cute, because one little girl walked up to him, she goes. Mr. Leal, I'm almost there, and I'll get to go to the party, but now I got to get my brother to read. So it was just, it was just really sweet. They, each class, because it's an avid site, each class represents. A college, and they do college presentations, and so they might be doing that again Monday. The teacher that was supposed to do it was out ill, so hopefully they get to do their last one on Monday. Um, Mr. Leal is very proud of his school. They're doing some great things there. He, when we went around to classrooms, it was really cool to see they had this goal of the read alouds. And so whatever class we walked into, they were doing that. Kids are predicting texts. They're giving summaries. I mean, amazing teachers. Thank you, teachers. It was just beautiful to see there. I'm very proud of Visalia Unified Schools.
Thank you. This past week, I went to the Joint Powers Civic. Meeting that we had. It's on our facilities, so LJ Williams, Rotary, the Rotary Theater. And we do that with the city council and our staff here, and a lot of it was catching up, because last year and the year, year before, it was COVID. But our facilities are, are opening up, and we're doing things out there. I know they have some plays and things going on. I think there's a play starting on Thursday from Green Acres at Rotary Theater. I also want to talk a little bit about our planning session, because what we did is we discussed the demographics and the demographic studies. And that's important, because that's going to impact the whole district, and those, there's some big decisions that could be made. I want to thank the new board members for attending the new board member institute by CSBA. I think that's very, very important. Getting caught up to speed. Further up in our agenda, we'll be talking about masters in governance also, and because that's coming up. And one of the things that I've always been talking about as your board president is that we need to have. Our board members up to speed on governance, and I appreciate that our new board members are attending the new board member institute. Okay, Mr. Cardoza?
Thank you, President Guerrero. First of all, I do want to put a plug out to, for our musicals. Uh, I had the opportunity to attend Mamma Mia. It was a combined effort between LD Amonte and Mount Whitney. It was a lot of fun. It was just. I sat there and watched. It was such an inclusive environment there for all kids, and, you know, they had our, our students that are in the signing class, and they all played roles. They all signed a specific character. They had lots of body movement, and I caught myself watching them a lot of the time. Because they were so into it and did such a fantastic job. So it was super fun. Looking forward to the rest of those Green Acres this weekend. Um, so I encourage you to get out there and go join that. Also, I just wanted to put a plug out to one of our newest principals, Alex Marakine at Divisadero. Mr. Thompson, Mrs. Somavie, and I made a quick visit there this week. And he's just got a great vision for the school in a short amount of time. Starting his third week, he has really identified some great. Targets and some work that needs to be done there, and, and to just continue work that's happened there, but really. To make some improvements and, and support staff and build a culture where kids want to be there. He just has a really nice approach, so. Kudos to him and really to all of our new principals and principals that are veterans out there supporting each other. Because they all kind of wrap their arms and lock arms together and support each other, and so I'm thankful for that. Again, we're looking forward to Saturday nights, our winter formal, so something to celebrate, and I think it'll be a lot of fun. I'm going to try to sneak out there and take a peek. And see what it looks like. So anyway, that's my report. Thank you.
Staff dismissal. We do have staff that is here working late, or they're on Zoom. You may be dismissed. Our next item on the agenda is enclosure number twenty-eight, recommended expulsions. Is there a motion? Ms. Casper Saleno motions. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Ms. Snyder. All in favor?
Board Member Naylor?
And it was Gabby that seconded, and yes.
Board Member Villegas?
Yes.
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Board Member Casper Saleno?
Yes.
Board Member Gabby?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Motion carries seven oh.
Okay, our next, uh, we're going to move on to our general agenda. Our next item on the agenda is the VUSD. Twenty-one, twenty-two, Winter Facility Projects, enclosure number twenty-nine, Mr. Eric Kerr.
Good evening, President Guerrero, interim superintendent Cardoza, members of the board, Eric Kerr, Operations Services. Tonight, we're going to talk about some good things, some projects that were completed over the winter. This is our winter update on projects that were completed. Uh, some were from last year and some were earlier this year, so we'll move on. So most of these projects are not huge projects, so they're usually done in, in collaboration between the Facilities Department and the Maintenance Department. So they do some, they do a lot of asphalt and concrete repairs, just some updates at the different schools there. We still see that we did some work on the school farm, Mount Whitney, Pinkham, Redwood, Shannon Ranch, some fill in some tree wells. A lot of these have to do with safety and just kind of general maintenance and upkeep of the sites. Some flooring projects. You all remember the Golden West office that was done earlier last year. We completed that. Linwood and did some re-carpeting. Hurley Library and Classroom, they did some work in the library at Hurley. New carpeting and some damaged flooring and some siding at Ocean Room three oh two. Did some painting again in the Golden West office. Mineral King, separate from their modernization, and also the district office, the bank, the banking office. Some of you may not even know where that is. It's, it's back in the back next to my office. A lot of people have never been in there. We do have a banking office with a safe, believe it or not. There's actually money in there. They, they did a really nice job. They put new flooring in there. They painted new cabinets, so we've kind of spruced that up. Did some electrical projects, replacing LED lighting and controls at Divisadero and LD's gym. HVAC projects, these are the ones you probably hear the most about. Because of the comfort issues, Divisadero, Mineral King, the Oaks got a new unit, Global, Elbow Creek, Sierra Vista. The wood shop at LD, we replaced the Sodas ventilation system, and then fit inspections, and I did get a question from Ms. Gamoyan today. In case any of you don't know what a fit inspection is, it's a facility inspection tool. So the Office of Public School Construction requires that all schools be inspected every year, and it's just basically to make sure that they're safe and well-maintained. There are several categories, and each site gets a report, and then we go behind that and, and correct any deficiencies that they have. Did some roofing and gutters at those sites. Plumbing and welding, handrails at Mineral King Bowl. We have, we have three welding teams that go out and do fence repairs and do things like Mineral King, the handrails at the bowl. We, we've saved a lot of money not having to go to outside contractors, be able to, being able to do those things in-house. Deep cleaning, want to give a shout out to our custodial team. During the winter break, they mobilize into, and this is kind of hard to read, I know, but they mobilize into, into teams. And so they, they suspend their normal nightly routine, and they focus on deep cleaning these sites on those days. So they have a plan. Uh, throughout the, the break, where they hit each of the sites, and they do a deep cleaning, carpet cleaning, scrubbing, sanitizing, cleaning walls, things like that. That's just the rest of the break. Then Measure A. Security projects, so Mount Whitney, LD Amonte, Redwood, all receive new camera system. If you haven't seen the, the new camera system, the Verkata system with the cameras and the access control. Next time you're over in the building, you want to stop by my office, I'll show it to you. It's pretty cool. Green Acres is in the middle of their modernization right now. They just started. And then Mineral King is our biggest one. They're already in phase three as completed. Eight classrooms and two restrooms, site concrete and furniture in there. They've started phase four, which is the last phase, and the remaining six classrooms will be done. So here's some pictures of the phase three. So. Any of you remember what Mineral King, the classrooms were before, you remember some of the older classrooms had those sliding glass metal walls. That were bolted shut. So all those, all those walls have been replaced with kind of regular walls, real walls. There's the new furniture. You can see the polished concrete, the new twenty-first century classroom furniture. Here's the restrooms. And the site concrete, so notice the concrete under the solar panels. That's been something that's been, we've, we've made that our district standard now. So we will be going back to the sites that don't have it and putting hard surface under the solar panels, so that it doesn't make a mud hole when it gets wet. And then concrete here in front of the classrooms. Here's what it looks like when they start the work. So you see that they've, they've, they've demoed the floors, they've demoed the concrete, they've demoed the walls, basically, it's a shell of a building, and then they go back in with. New wood framing, new pipes, new HVAC. You can see the HVAC vents in the ceiling. And this is also part of phase four, so exterior, not just inside, they're replacing the concrete on the outside as well. And that's it. Any questions? Be happy to answer.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Thanks for making sure our schools look and feel good, Eric, and can the deep cleaners come to my house? Can I pay them?
Thank you.
I also want to echo my thanks to Eric and to all of our maintenance and custodial staff for all their hard work. I, when I got to tour Mount Whitney. Principal Aguilar, you know, showed me the gym renovations and the floor, and I just, you know, it looked spectacular. He was, you know, kind of telling me about some of the work to, to come. Uh, but just the fact that he showed me like, yeah, we can do like three basketball games at the same time here, like two this way, one this way. I was like, wow, that is outstanding. So I'm looking forward to seeing it when it's all complete and looking at the rest of these projects as well when they come to fruition, so.
Thank you. That is our largest gym, by the way. Mount Whitney is the largest gym.
Any other board member questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. That was information only. I'll move on to our next item on the agenda, and that is the twenty-twenty-one Annual District Financial Audit. Audits. Enclosure number thirty. Presenter would be Axel Pondo, Visalia Internal Auditor. And he'll be joined by Jennifer Aras, External Auditor from Crow LLP. Sarah is joining us by Zoom.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, interim superintendent Cardoza, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Axel Condo, and I serve as the internal auditor for Visalia Unified School District. So tonight, we'll be presenting the district financial audit for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. So for the period that ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, and the presentation will be done by. Jen Aras from Crow, our external auditor. So basically, the ed code. Four one oh two zero does require the district to have an audit, an annual audit by CPA firm. Crow is the firm that helped us with that, and it's helped us with. Kind of shows some of the transparency of the things that goes at the district and also help ascertain that. You know, a financial. Report where I create and that. And that. Basically, we followed all the procedures and the differences that we have. That it's in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principle or GAAP. So at the end of the presentation, you will be asked to essentially ask, to vote to accept the report. So. Jen? Would you take it away?
Yes, Axel, thank you, and I'm happy to be on video, on camera. The, the Zoom is not allowing me to turn my camera on though, because the host has blocked that. So I'll, I'll leave it to the discretion of the host. If you'd like my video on, happy to do that. Otherwise, I'll just speak loudly. Thank you for having me here tonight. I am actually the signing partner on the Visalia Unified School District Audit. And as Axel mentioned, we are your independent auditors. So if we can advance to the next slide, please. Um, I'm going to go through high level for you, the auditor's responsibility. We are, you know, engaged by the board, and, and we're here to serve, and, and we are independent of the district. We are engaged to express an opinion on the financial statements. We are also engaged to perform a, a separate audit related to the federal grants. That are received by the district, given the size of those grants in total and individually. And then because you are a school district in the state of California, we actually issue a separate opinion and perform separate audit procedures related to state compliance. We do perform what we refer to as a risk-based audit, and so Axel and others within management can attest to the fact that we spend time. Getting to know the district, getting to know your policies and procedures and your internal control processes. And understanding, you know, the, the flow of information, the flow of funds, and really focus our audit approach in where we deem there to be. Risk just inherently based on the nature of the transactions. Lastly, related to the, the audit performed under governmental audit standards, we're also required to take a look at the internal controls. And we actually have a separate opinion for you related to the internal controls over financial reporting. As you see here at the bottom of the slide, that the audit is really kind of a continuous process. And so we typically start the audit process in the spring, in that March timeframe with our planning procedures. Do a lot of our internal control and compliance work through May, you know, right before school is out. And then come back after management has had the chance to close the books. As of June thirtieth, we come back in the fall. Perform all of our substantive testing, follow up on any open items, and then really work through the reporting and completion component of the audit. If you could advance to the next slide, please. There's one new item to bring to your attention this year related to accounting standards. So this is a new accounting standard that was issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, so basically applicable to all governmental entities. Every school district audit report that you pick up this year is going to have a restatement related to GASB eighty-four. And, you know, don't be alarmed by the term restatement. This is really a reorganization of funds. And so there are student activities that occur, and, and there are funds related to that, both held as well as. The ins and the outs, right, of the, the revenue and the expense during the year, and prior to the implementation of GASB eighty-four. Those balances were maintained on kind of a separate schedule, almost as an addendum to your financial statements as a district. And what GASB eighty-four said is, you know, the district really has some hand and oversight of, of those funds. And that has now required that those student activity funds be included within the financial statements of the district. And so you'll see that as a separate fund and included in the aggregate remaining fund information. So again, no reason to be alarmed. This was very standard for the adoption of this new accounting standard that virtually every government was impacted by. We go to the next slide. I always think that this is really important. You know, throughout the audit process, we're testing transactions, revenue transactions, expense transactions, balances. And we were able to complete the audit and not have any misstatements that were identified. And so, you know, from your position and in the form of governance, that, that really should give you a level of assurance that the transactions are processing through appropriately and your financials that you're looking at on a periodic basis are, are accurate. They're, they're fairly stated. There were no audit adjustments posted as a result of our procedures. We do have one thing to bring to your attention related to uncorrected misstatements. And so an uncorrected misstatement is something that we come across where, you know, it, it's a balance, but it's not a balance that's considered material to the financial statements. Or said differently, users of the financial statements wouldn't make a different decision about the district if that adjustment was not posted. And so this is a bit more, I'm going to use the term administrative in that the district has a separate internal service fund for the self-insurance activity that you have. And the, the rule of the law, if you will, under the accounting standards would say that a portion of the Calsters and Calpers net pension liability should actually be allocated over to the self-insurance fund because there is some payroll that's related to that self-insurance activity. Management has made the decision that this is, it's a cost benefit analysis, if you will. And so the portion that would be related to the self-insurance fund, they've deemed to be immaterial. We agree that it's immaterial and we're just not pushing that portion over to the self-insurance fund. So in total, the net pension liability is correct and fairly stated within the financials. We just didn't carve out that little piece that relates to self-insurance and presented in that separate fund. So nothing that I would be alarmed about if I were in your position, but a, a level that we were required to bring it to your attention. Next slide, please. This is a little bit of a hodgepodge of everything else. But again, required communications from your independent auditor. I think it's important to understand that we didn't have any difficulties in working with management. There were no disagreements over accounting treatments. We're not aware of management, the, the term is opinion shopping. So going to other accountants and saying, hey, you know, what would you think about this? That, that could, you know, really cause some issues. And there were no, you know, other items that came about through the audit process that we think would rise to the level of your attention. And quite frankly, no other items. Management was very easy to work with and we're very appreciative of that professional and working relationship that we have. Next slide, please. This is probably what you've all been waiting for. For the opinions that were issued as a result of our audit, all were what we would call unmodified or clean opinions. So this is exactly what you would want to receive. No findings were related, were identified through the performance of our audit procedures related to the financial statements, the internal controls, federal compliance or state compliance. So overall, you know, very good results that you should be proud of. Next slide. Here we have for you just some key highlights of the financial statistics from your audited financial statements. And again, there were no changes in the audited balances from what you would have seen as of the June 30th balances prior to the audit beginning. You were in compliance with the reserve percentage requirements recommended by the state of California. And there was a positive certification received from the county superintendent of schools. I think my next slide, yes. So in summary here, no reportable findings, as I mentioned, which, you know, just as perspective, given all the challenges that management faced in the current year, in the COVID environment, everything that came about because of that, just in getting daily work done, then adding in all of the complexities with additional federal and state funding and the additional requirements from a compliance standpoint related to distance learning and all the additional requests that we had as an audit team, you know, again, something certainly to be very proud of. Next slide. And here we just had for you just a summary, just reaffirming that it was all good news and the audit was completed on time. Really appreciative and because of the hard work of your management team. I know I went through that information fairly quickly and I'd be happy to address any questions that anyone has.
Okay. So are there any questions or comments by the board?
Just want to say, good job. I love the fact that it's unmodified. I look for that right away as soon as I go to the report. So good job, everybody.
And Mr. President Guerrero, I just wanted to say, thank you, Mr. Kondo. I think it's the first time you've been here in person since I have been here. It's a pleasure to see you in person and not on the screen and to thank you again for, for what you do for our district. I know it's probably kind of a thankless job, but we really do appreciate it, especially as board members, just breaking it down for us. And we trust Nathan with all of our hearts, but it's good to hear the, the, the flag of, or the, you know, stamp of approval.
And thank you to all the finance, people involved with finances, everybody. The first thing I look for is to see if there were any findings. And that's the first thing that I look at these reports. There are none, no findings on this or the next item on our agenda. Thank you very much.
Do I move? Do we have to move to approve?
Yeah, this, this is an action item.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Move to accept.
Move to accept.
Yeah, move to accept. There's second, second. All in favor?
Board Member Viegas?
Yes.
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Board Member Casper Saleno?
Yes.
Board Member Gabi?
Yes.
I vote yes. Board Member, President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
I, I, motion carries seven oh.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is enclosure number 31. And this would be Measure A, 2020, 2021, Measure A Performance and Financial Audits, enclosure number 31. Presenter Axel Kondo and he'll be joined by Jennifer Eres, External Auditor.
Hello again. So this is, so basically the way the finance, the way we present our financial record, we have the district overall financial and this is basically the audit of our Measure A bond. And it's, it's in two parts. There's the financial side and the performance side. That Crow also, as an auditor, looked at for us and, you know, to be able to say that we are goods toward of the public funds. So Jen, who is also a Crow managing partner, is here to also present on that item.
Great, thank you, Axel. And this will go much quicker than the last presentation. A lot of the, the framework is all the same. And as Axel mentioned, we perform both a financial statement audit and a performance audit. So you'll have those two documents within your materials. And if we could go to the next slide, we jumped straight to the, to the point here and looking at the audit results. And so from a financial statement audit standpoint, we are again issuing an unmodified opinion. And so very much what you want, a, a clean opinion. We found the financials to be presented fairly and to have no findings or question costs through the performance of our procedures. We then perform a performance audit, which is much more focused in scope. And we had no exceptions identified in our testing sample. And so again, we're able to issue an unmodified or clean opinion. Thank you. So through the performance audits, we take a look specifically at the expenditures. And so there were total expenditures of just over 2.9 million of bond funds during the year and a transfer out of just over a million dollars. So we ran our sampling methodology and came up with a popular, a sample size of just over 1.1 million dollars or about almost 40% of the expenditures and performed testing down to the detail for those. So looking at invoices, looking at approvals, some of them are, you know, stacks of multiple invoices that comprise the total and then tested the transfer in total and found all of that activity to be not only fairly represented through the control process, but also in line with the language in the, the actual bond offering as well. So again, no findings or question costs. And my coworker has his information here. He was intending to, to present this evening, but we ended up with a few board meetings on our calendars tonight. So I had the chance to be here with you. But certainly if there are questions, I'd be happy to address them now or you can always contact Charles. He, he works closely with me on this and he would get that information over to me and I could circle back with a, with a response in a future date.
Any board member questions or comments? I do have a request for an RSCP for public comment. Oh, Ms. Blair, or who was it?
It was me. And I just want to say, I love that we have a finance department that is this passionate about finances as our curriculum department is about teaching and learning. You guys are fabulous and thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Macia?
Good evening, board. I'm your chair for the Bond Oversight Committee for Measure A. As your staff report states that per Senate Bill 581, the audit has been submitted to the Bond Oversight Committee. Although technically that's true, they have submitted it via email on February 4th. Your Oversight Committee has not had a chance to review this audit as of today. We haven't had any formal meeting to review it. We haven't had any way to perform any kind of presentation. There hasn't been any way for us to provide any comments. So as though, as there's no findings, there's nothing there that you can, you know, you can move on. But at the end of the day, your Oversight Committee has not had time to review this, other than receiving it via email. So should the Bond Oversight Committee review this and accept it before you take action tonight? I think you have until March 31st before you have to actually have this submitted. So there is time for us to still assemble. And we've always stated that we can assemble pretty quickly at any time in order to accommodate the business of the board. So thank you for your consideration.
So the question is, when is the deadline? March 31st?
So so for that, for that portion, you do have some time. But the way, the way it works is that the board and, and the district, the board and the district are not technically separate. Because when the board acts, when the board accepts the audit, that's when the district like technically received the audit, right? So we, the way we've done it in the past and we had, I believe that question, that question came about also last year is that the board accepts the audit, then the Bond Oversight Committee would do its review and its, and its presentation to you if they, you know, if they have any comment. But, you know, the, it's just a matter of accepting the audit because the, the audit is, it's technically done, like there's no, yeah, there's no chain, there's no action per se, is, is, is accepting it.
So last year, did the Bond Oversight Committee see it first before we accepted it? I can't remember.
Yeah, I, I, I tend, I do remember. And we made an agreement that all items that related to the bond oversight would be given to the bond oversight for review. Then they'd be coming to the board so that we can accept.
Yeah, last, last year, go ahead, go ahead, Eric.
So, so the, the bond oversight bylaws, as Axel mentioned, the, the audit is not technically completed until you accept it. And we can't give it to the bond oversight until it's presented and accepted by the district. That's, that's the bylaw. That's what it says. And so as soon as you take that action today.
We have to accept it first.
Yes, just like you did the last one. Then they, they've received it yesterday when you got it electronically, but it's not technically delivered to the district until you accept it tonight. And then they will have it because it's not technically completed audit until you accept it.
Right. So I want to make sure that we're crossing our i's and crossing our t's. And I want to make sure in the future, we have anything that needs to go bond oversight first to have it reviewed. And then it comes to us because that was our agreement with them as a committee. If we, if it's, if we're to accept first, then fine, let's accept, but it needs to go to bond oversight.
Are there any repercussions if we choose to table this until the next board meeting? Or, or because it sounds like you're, Mr. Carey, you said that, you know, they can't see it until we've approved it. But Mr. Macia says that they've already received it as well. And so I just want some clarification around.
They, they have a copy of it. They received the copy yesterday or the day before when, when.
Friday.
Friday, last Friday, we sent it out, knowing that you would see it tonight. Then we have a March Bond Oversight Committee and on that meeting and on that agenda will be this annual report and the findings. And then they will bring that to the board after their meeting. They will have their annual report in March.
Okay.
That's typically, that's typically how it flows.
But so I need a motion to.
I would move to accept.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Blair, second by Ms. Casper Saleno. Oh, okay.
Um, okay. Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Board Member Casper Saleno?
Yeah.
Board Member Gabi?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
And Board Member Viegas?
Yes.
Motion carries seven oh.
Next item on the agenda is resolution to release a non, non-employment of temporary employees. Enclosure number 32, Ms. Somovia.
Board President Guerrero, I just have a fast clarification. So the motion, was that by Blair or Gay? Because I thought I, I heard Gabi's voice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, enclosure number 32.
Good evening again, Board, Board President Guerrero and interim Superintendent Cardoza, Didi Somovia, HR. This is the superintendent of HRD. It's getting late here. I bring you tonight the Resolution of Release of Non-Employment for Temporary Employees. Each year we hire between 25 and 30, this year, this last year, 33 temporary teachers. So those are teachers that are hired on a temporary contract. And we do so to make sure that any teacher that we have out, either as an intervention teacher or a teacher on special assignment or job share, that we have room to bring those back if we need to the following year. So those teachers sign the temporary contract. They're made aware that it's a 401 full year contract. By ed code 44954, we have to notice them that their contract is ending. So this is a formality, if you will, they, they know this is happening already. We do take effort to rehire as many as we can. Given any openings that we would have in the district. So I bring this to you tonight for approval.
Okay, this is an action item.
I make the motion.
Ms. Casper Saleno motions to accept.
I'll second Blair.
Ms. Blair, all in favor?
Board Member Casper Saleno?
Yes.
Board Member Gabi?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
Board Member Viegas?
Yes.
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to enclosure number 33. And Mr. Doug Cardoza, this is regarding the 2022 CSBA Delegate Assembly Election.
Thank you, President Guerrero. So the VUSD Board will be electing two representatives to serve a two-year term from April 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2024, in the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly for Subregion 12A of Tulare County. The delegates set the general policy and direction to fulfill a crucial role, governance role within the association. They communicate the interests and the local boards to CSBA's Board of Directors, Executive Committee and Staff. Candidates listed on the ballot are Jacqueline Gabi and Peter, Peter Laura Jr. from Porterville. So tonight we need you to take action or make nominations to elect delegates to the CSBA Assembly.
I move to nominate our wonderful Jacqueline Gabi and Pete Laura. I second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. I have a question here. So there are two vacancies?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Vacancies?
Yes, okay, yes. We elect two representatives.
Two representatives, okay. Just want to be clear on that. Okay, all in favor?
President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
Board Member Viegas?
I just want to say yes, and thank you for stepping into this.
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Board Member Casper Saleno?
Yes.
Board Member Gabi? Yeah, you get to vote, yes. I vote yes. Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
There, there are no more items on the agenda. This meeting is adjourned.